I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
First and second in discussion.
Can I, can I recommend, I'm sorry, a slight change to the, to the agenda?
Yes.
Move up, move the pressure donation or sale topic to first for Mr. Coy. And then if you saw my email, it's not on the agenda, but some information from IHLS. We've called the IHLS report for the trustees. We can move them second.
Absolutely.
It's just information.
I have a question to amend the agenda.
Yeah, I make a motion to amend the agenda as per my.
Same. And I, so first and second in discussion, seeing none of the others, I'm sorry, I'm opening the chair. Sorry, the chair, I'm sorry.
So I asked Mr. Coy to join us to talk to us about, you know, the sale, the sale or donation, of how the legal issues surrounding it. I've had a hard time kind of making clear about this, this furniture, the mid, collectible mid-century games furniture. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Coy.
It's nice to meet all of you today. Thanks for having me. Again, my name is Jordan Klein, attorney. I've been working with Rick here for a number of weeks on this issue. And I guess I could talk a little bit about kind of what my research has shown, or, you know, do you guys have specific questions that you guys have about this process? I think what makes this situation unique and probably the reason that I'm here is that we have a library policy that, you know, very closely mimics, if not as identical to state statute, that is really not written for circumstance like we have here and has no case law interpreting what the rules are in this specific instance. So we're kind of operating in a little bit of a gray area here. But as I understand it, as Rick has explained it to me, the library rightfully so is trying to maximize its return on selling this furniture to try to, you know, put some more money back in your guys' pocket to again, to approve the library. So I think the statute is really written in a way that contemplates we've got excess old things, not necessarily junk, because you could just get rid of that, but items that don't necessarily have a ton of value. And that's why the statute has these thresholds in it that are a little bit lower. So here we've got items that actually have some value. The problem is getting that to a willing buyer, right? That's kind of the, the issue that we're tasked with. So I guess I'll turn it back to you guys. What would you like to see done with this? And then I guess I can give some maybe thoughts on whether or not that fits maybe in the parameters of what the law would allow.
I, I have two questions if no, if no trustees have.
I mean, the comment I think the, you know, the board, like I said, to maximize the profit as much as possible for sake of the returning cost to the library and its general operations. So how we will not do it, that has been obviously a little difficult. Whether it's a private seller selling in that sense and they pay the fees, I kind of associate with that. Whether that's the most critical way to go about the situation. I guess it's we're seeing some limits between yourself and those that have the role of knowledge associated.
So do you think that the, the library could directly hire or, or can say?
Yeah, absolutely. And that's in statute. You know, the board may retain counsel and professional consultants as needed, period, end of discussion. So if the, if the library deems it appropriate that, hey, we're going to retain an expert to either help value, help sell, do whatever, bring these items to market. I think you're within your authority to do so. You just have to do sort of this cost benefit analysis. Are we going to be able to make more money hiring this person to cover their fees and costs than we were without them? And I think, I think, you know, we, you and I both looked at the numbers. I think assuming you, you put these products in the right buyer's hands, the answer is absolutely yes. You might not even be able to sell this stuff without his help. I don't know. So.
Yeah, that's typical when we've sold things of, of some value, we do it on auction. I just don't think that's the market for, you know, that's where you get a used cop car, you know, for, for a thousand dollars.
Exactly right.
And I'm not sure that that's the market for, you know, collectible mid-century furniture.
Well, I mean, if you do that, then somebody's going to buy it in their own term of itself. I mean, I'm sure people are looking for, looking to do that.
So one of the things that we, we talked about was donating to the foundation and let them sell it on our behalf. But I think if I recall correctly, you think that the better, the better option is to simply hire someone to, you know, appropriate to sell it on, on the library's behalf and in order to maximize, and we don't have to go through a third party like, like the foundation?
Yeah, that's exactly right. I think there are some complications going through the foundation. I think the primary complication is the statute itself is ambiguous in this instance, whether or not you have to sell or could donate. The statute itself says sell or dispose of, right? So what does dispose of mean? Sell, we understand, but doesn't define that. So I think a conservative reading of the statute says, look, if Illinois legislature was going to allow for sale disposition or giving away of this furniture of value or anything of value, would have been more clear about that. That's statutory construction. So I think a conservative reading of the statute says, look, the library, if it's going to do this, it has to sell it. So I don't think the library is going to be within the bounds of just giving it to the foundation.
So what leads you to believe that if they put sell and/or dispose of, that both they would just say sell twice in two different words?
Sure.
And not sell direct?
So again, gray area, no case law interpreting this particular statute. So this is something that, you know, you guys, you guys hire me to assess risk, right? I'm going to tell you where the risk in this analysis is. You guys can decide is that a risk that's acceptable to the board or not. So I read this statute to say such may be sold or disposed of at a public sale pursuant to the following rules. And then it lists out one, two, three, four, under certain circumstances, based on how the property is valued, whether or not you're going to dispose of or give it to. And the first example is may be donated or sold to another tax-supported library or to any library system. So that's item number one. So I think when the legislature in, in the kind of preface of this statute says sold or disposed of, well, one is an example of donated. They use the word donated right there. But then we're going to fall somewhere in two, three, or four, because the property has value. Nowhere in two, three, and four does it say donated. It's always sold, sold, sold.
But why would it, I, I, I mean, so, so without, without reading the document, I, I don't know. Even if you're giving it away, right? I mean, I would imagine the library thing is giving away to any, any public or private body. There would be some kind of, you know, waiver or, you know, like non-guarantee or.
I think you're giving away something of value. And the thing is, it's like the, the, the group, the trust we, we're giving it to doesn't necessarily have to give us back the money.
That's exactly right.
Well, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's donating. I mean, anytime you donate, I mean, yeah.
Right.
So, 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 so the point is, is that because it has value and we would like to maximize the value and say we gave it to them and they didn't give us back the money, then we would be wasting taxpayers' money. Whereas if we sell it ourselves and we have the money in our account, then it's ours.
But so, before saying, I, I thought we were giving it to them to sell. We're not giving it to them, right? We're giving it to them with the intent to sell and not have.
Yes, but that's not handshake. That's not a.
But I also think what Jordan is recommending is that we don't do that, that we just simply sell it.
But I'm asking, like, what's the difference between giving it to them with the intent to sell versus us selling it to them?
Sure. Great question. And I think the, the original idea was to get the foundation involved so that maybe the foundation, which isn't restricted by some of these requirements, could dispose of the property, sell the property, do what it needed to do without being limited by the Illinois library.
And that was my question. So going through the foundation, are we giving it to the foundation that says handle this for us or we give it to them with any kind of instruction? As to two segments, do move this with the intent of two, three, four?
I don't think that you could do that and make it enforceable.
So what, what was the offering of the foundation? Like, what did they say? Did they say that they were?
We haven't, we haven't, I, I'd love to know that it's something that was being considered, but like you said, just let us know what is decided by the attorney and the board.
And what is their usual means of handling stuff for this section? Do they sell it all? Do they?
No. Well, and I think the more recent examples have been, I'm trying to think back. We had the Bookmobile, right? That was sold by you guys individually. That wasn't transferred to current. That, you know, we talked about a number of other examples. All were handled internally by the library.
But to, to, and to answer your question, Joe, to go, at least in my, in my tenure here, they never sold anything. They raised money simply by asking for it. They just wrote send letters and say, will you give us back?
I think the reason why we would not have riled it first place is because they wouldn't have to be people caught on something for disclosing the property as we as other bodies, so it's dangerous to not.
Now, did we, did we reach out to the library about these items or did they just, I mean, the foundation? Did we reach out to them?
I had, I had a casual conversation with, with their president and he said, just let us know what the board says.
I personally think we should just keep them and sell them ourselves because we don't risk anything illegal because it's something expensive that belongs to the taxpayers. The money will come right back to the taxpayers in the form of our library. Whereas if we give away something expensive to another group that may, probably will, but may or may not give us back the money, then we put ourselves at risk.
And that's where I'm confused, because, because I'm hearing.
Why?
Two, two different things. I mean, we're, we're not.
We're not giving it to the foundation.
That's the suggestion to not, that's the advice of counsel.
Yes.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, the reason why I'm hearing that we're going that way is because we, there's a, there's a sentiment that if we give it to the, we're giving it to the foundation, right?
Kind of, yeah. I mean, they, there would be, we would no way to enforce that they would give it back.
So that's my question. Why would we give it to the foundation? You know what I mean? I don't know if it's, we're giving it, we were giving it to them. Because I think from the offset of it, right, the original purpose was to get some kind of compensation for it.
And I think, I think, you know, my original conversation with Jordan, he said, I don't think a quid pro quo is going to work here. Yeah, I don't think that's enforceable and that, it's better to, probably better to sell it yourselves than to expect a quid pro quo from a, what is, a standalone separate organization, you know, at the end of the day. That's what the PPL foundation is.
And my vote goes out because we have as much research and drive as we receive and that legal verification on one.
Whether we had to sell on.
Or two, whether I would have, like I said, we have maximize the profit.
And whether we had to sell on like doc dev.
Or, or an auction here at the library because of the broker.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt.
Well, I was just saying, the, the broker, you know, that we have found, that we talked to, seeing about, you know, going through these fees, is a considerable amount of money. So it's just a matter of whether or not, one, I was available to listen, I think, if desirable for myself, you know, as Sophia, and I knew Jordan and the board, it's just about whether or not, one, I find out I have the legal avenue which you could take, and then two, I mean, then ask, can we, who are we going to go with? This is a lot of stuff to consider.
I, I, all I was going to add, and I didn't mean to step on your toes, I apologize. Maybe it's worthwhile to talk a little bit about the procedure that the library would have to go through versus what the foundation would have to go through. And maybe, you know, that's, I think, worthwhile thinking about a little bit. The advantage to going through the foundation is that they can do whatever they want. They're not governed by state statutes that were limited by on number of times publishing notice, where the auction can be held, you know, who can do it, how it can be sold, any of these parameters of if, if it's this dollar amount, you have to do these requirements. If it's between this and this dollar amount, you have to do these requirements. So I think what the reason the foundation got involved, or was at least discussed, is because you could potentially short circuit some of that. But I think based on our analysis, or at least my recommendation, there's no guarantee you get any of that money back if you do donate it, if that was allowed. And I don't think the statute allows for donation under these circumstances anyways.
Because I'm just saying you could donate to another public.
That's exactly right.
Or donate to private.
That's, that's where I'm confused. I, I don't think the intent for us was to donate it to the foundation.
No, you were, that's exactly right. We're not just giving it to them. You're giving it to them with the expectation that they're going to dispose of it and cut a check back to us for the entire amount.
And is there no way to do that via contract?
We'd not ask them.
You just have to give it to them?
Yeah, we'd not ask them.
And, and just kind of be like a.
Right. And that's not so much a public library restriction. That's a foundation, foundation restriction, right?
That anything given to them is up to their discretion to do that?
Right, exactly. Exactly. Now, can you have handshake?
I mean, that kind of tests them out, just, so I don't know, I'm, I'm from Texas, right? Any kind of agreement whatsoever is admissible in court, whether it's verbal, written, handshake.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's still a horse town, right?
Yeah.
It's still a horse state. So I'm saying, I don't know Illinois law, like if you say, hey, we get that and they agree.
You and I could enter into an oral contract and I could take you to court and sue you over breach of that oral contract, period, no problem. That's you individually as a person and that's me individually as a person.
Between two organizations.
But they're a foundation. They're a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit. They're registered with the Illinois Attorney General as a charitable foundation. That in and of itself limits some of their ability to contract.
Yeah, but if we give them something though, right, isn't there a contract or a document you have to sign before you give them? Like, I don't think we're giving them something that's no documents.
No, they get to decide because they have to file taxes.
Well, what I'm saying is if we give them items, right?
They don't have to give us the money back.
That's not what I'm talking about at this point. If we give them items, right? There is a paper that has to be signed saying, we, the Decatur Public Library, donate these items to the foundation.
Yeah.
So that, yeah, that, that alone in my mind says that regardless of what we wanted, they wouldn't have to give us to you or them. They wouldn't have to give us.
That was the point. They don't have to give us the money back.
So I mean, why is it something we're considering? That's my point, right?
We actually were all over it. The rest of us were saying we want.
It didn't take the laureate to come here to say that, right? If we already understood that, we could have just been like, oh, the broker, he is selling.
I was going to say it's illegal. It's illegal, Greg, because we have to have counsel.
The, the broker part was also illegal, Greg.
We just didn't know if we were able to sell it in a, a better auction than somebody that was going to get us bottom dollar. We want to get top dollar for it.
And that explains.
And at this point, we could get top dollar. And that was the reason why we were thinking about giving it to the foundation was because they could get top dollar for it. But as a result of what he has said, it's actually not legal for us to donate it to the foundation because they are not another library, which is the only thing we can do.
Well, I'm saying donate and sell are two different things. And that's kind of like a common word understanding, right? If you donate something, that's giving it away. Selling it or with intent to sell is you let somebody be your, for lack of a better word, spokesman or salesman or, or standing, right?
There's, there's also a requirement too, and maybe Rick has mentioned that before. We do have to give the City of Cater, right, a first refusal to purchase all of this property as well.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that one's a big, big problem, but.
Sure. As I know, we see, we see.
But as, but as, as, yeah, as you're, what you're saying, while there might be, the summary is that the, I think we're all in agreement that the donation, that going to the foundation is not going to happen.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, but the, if we, the library directly hires this or any other broker, you, you think that it's not without risk, but the risk is relatively minimal.
Correct. No, unless you guys have any other questions, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you very much.
Sounds great. Thank you.
I appreciate you coming.
Thanks, Rick.
So I guess, is it Ann?
We've got Dr. Annie Gankel, the apple, excuse me, and Dr. Leanne Ferby here from Illinois Heart and Library System. They have worked very hard over the last, they've worked very hard over the last, really, what, year and a half or so, ladies, to develop a training, online training for trustees in Illinois. And I wanted to make you guys aware of it, so I asked them to, to come address our board. Hi, ladies. Thanks for your patience. Nice to see you both again.
Good to see you. Thank you for having us. Yes, thank you. I appreciate you inviting us and for your interest in ILEED. We developed this resource with trustees in mind. We know you assume this position, doesn't have a lot of glory, there's no money involved. We asked a lot of you and, but it's very important work that you do. The work you do for the library improves the library and the library helps improve the community. So you're making your community better and you're doing this with your love of the library. So having spent 40 years working in libraries, I deeply appreciate that you two are committed to the library's mission. So that being said, I've worked in libraries for 40 years and I have worked with trustees, or at least 15 of those. And in my experience with trustees, as I say, a lot of people get coerced, sweet-cocked, voluntold into doing this position and they're not really sure what they're getting into. And then once you're there, you know, you hear something from one person and then someone else tells you something else. So I really thought we needed to build a foundation where everyone knows the same stuff. And that, you know, if you say, oh, we're going to talk about levies, everyone knows what a levy is. We don't expect that, you know, everyone needs a high level of expertise, but you at least need to know what's being talked about. And so we kind of did this so we could compare apples to apples and oranges to oranges and give you a clear idea of what your duties and responsibilities are. The fact that, you know, a lot of what you do is laid out in, in Illinois statutes and there are some fines for some things if you don't do them, and, you know. So it's, it's a very important job that you do. And so we want to make sure that you understand it, that you have the tools to do it. And basically, we created this so you can always have it available. You can refer back to it. We've had the content created by, I would call them subject experts. People, you know, especially like the first years where we did like the basics of being trustee and what you need to know. And so we, we had trustees who are, you know, at least, well, I think all four of them actually had been named trustee of the year at one time or another by ILA. And so we're very happy that they contributed. And then whenever they contributed, we also had a lawyer look it over to make sure that everything was stated correctly and the statutes we referred to were correct. And we also tried to make it as accessible as possible. So we have closed captioning. We also have, where you can translate the text and the audio into foreign language, or not foreign, other languages. Because even if you're an expert English speaker, sometimes you find that you learn better in your native language. And so we provided that option as well. And we have the ability to keep this, the information that's presented here current and accurate. And this second year, we have content providers who are providing information on planning, financial stuff you need to know, community engagement, and some legal issues that you will be dealing with. And as I said, this is available to you whenever you want it. And, you know, if you decide that, we use a format that a lot of universities use. And we created 10 to 15 minute modules. So these are nice bite-sized chunks that you can watch, you can pause them, you can go back to where you paused and pick it up later. You can print off anything you want. We've tried to make it as easy as possible for you because if this isn't useful to you, we've failed. This is all about you, the trustee, and making your job easier and making sure that you have the information you need. And I feel like I'm very fortunate in that I had this idea, as I said, having worked with trustees and seeing some of the needs. And especially, I think after COVID, I found that there was a lot of dysfunction in boards. And some of that is you had new people come on and they weren't familiar with what a trustee is supposed to do and they hadn't really developed a relationship with their other trustees. And so I just felt there was a real need and the state also, the state library also felt there was a need. And so we were fortunate to get funding to create this. And I was certainly fortunate in that I was able to have my wonderful partner in crime here. I mean, not crime, creativity, we'll say that. My wonderful partner, creativity, Dr. Leanne Ferby, who has a PhD in curriculum design. And she's also an expert of project management. And she's very creative, technologically savvy. And I also had the wonderful advantage in that Leanne did not come from a library background. So she kind of like was questioning things, well, what does that mean? And you mean, there are different types of public libraries and there's, you know, all of those kind of things. So it was really good to have those fresh set of eyes. And now that she's done this, she's kind of an expert at it. And Leanne also loves feedback. And after each of the modules, we do have a feedback section and we do ask you to, to use that. Now, if you have other people you know who you want to recruit to become trustees on our website, we do have a section about the pathway to becoming a trustee. There are differences. You are city library, there are district libraries and there are village libraries and township libraries. So there's a little bit of difference, but, you know, all of those instructions are there. And as I say, this is all designed with you in mind. And I think a lot of the material will also be useful to directors and other library staff members. We got a lot of the ideas we have from surveys that we sent to every trustee that we could identify. And they kind of said, well, these are the things that we think are important. And so we tried to create the curriculum for this training on what they, on what we were told. So I am going to turn it on over to Leanne and stop talking now. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to post in the chat on our website, which you had mentioned, is www.ileedtrustee.org. There you can read more about the ILEED trustee portal. It is where we post updates. There are, we are currently in the process of hosting several workshops to do more than just this 10-minute demo. We take about an hour, an hour and a half to walk those attendees through so that they can learn how to navigate and best utilize the portal itself. But I know you're short on time and so. But I know you're short on time, and so we promised 10 minutes to Rick. I have provided a link to a video that'll show you a demo. We'll let that go ahead and play, and then Anna and I can answer any questions you may have.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us today. My name is Natalie, and I am one of the ILEAD Trustee avatars. Today's in-person presenters are Annie Gackel and Leanne Furby. We are excited and delighted to share the ILEAD Trustee Learning Portal with all of you. Our visionary, Annie Gackel, is a degree librarian with around 40 years of library experience, and at least 15 years of that has included attending board meetings and helping trustees, directors, and entire boards navigate the journey of library governance. Annie has a deep respect and appreciation for the time, effort, and dedication provided by trustees in support of their libraries and communities. Leanne Furby has a PhD in Learning Systems Design and Technology, and is a master at project management. She came to this project as a longtime library user, but a novice to the many aspects of running a library and the work of public library boards. Allow me to introduce you to ILEAD. This learning portal was developed through a grant designed to assist Illinois public library trustees in understanding their role and the accompanying duties and responsibilities of the job. Anna wished to create an easily accessible, interactive online portal for trustee development to provide consistent information, instruction, and guidance. The mission is to give the public library trustees of Illinois the knowledge they need to be successful. The inspiration for the project has been all of the trustees who have asked for guidance, clarifications about their duties, and how to find the laws that must be followed in the governance of their libraries. It was determined that trustees need a resource that provides the knowledge to provide leadership and the facts to empower them to succeed. When Anna and Leanne first embarked on this grant project, they sent a survey to every trustee they could identify in the state, asking them which topics they thought were important in conducting their business. Anna and Leanne examined the survey results, consulted with their advisory committee, and determined which topics would be used as their starting point. Next, they reached out to current trustees across the state to help provide the portal's content. Finally, they took the provided content and created the 10- to 15-minute learning modules that now exist in the ILEAD Trustee Course. This one-stop, in-depth, multi-layered resource eliminates barriers while expanding the improved capabilities of individuals and boards, resulting in better library governance across the state. ILEAD is delivered through the Canvas Learning Management System. To ensure the content is easily managed and updated, you will find several avatar facilitated presentations, like the one you are watching now. Anna and Leanne have integrated the existing knowledge of trustees and resources with point-of-first-century technology to bring trustees the best tools currently available in the state of Illinois. Why is all of this so important? Trustees, whether elected or appointed, are government officials. They have legal and fiduciary responsibilities. They set the tone for the library, and they should project a positive image of the library to the community. Informed trustees provide better library governance. Better governance leads to better libraries. Better libraries help improve their communities. Better libraries, better governance, better communities. That sounds good to me. How about you? Are you ready to learn more? Let's take a look inside the ILEAD Trustee Learning Portal. The ILEAD Development Team is spreading the word that the Learning Portal is now open to all Illinois public library trustees. The Illinois Secretary of State and former public library trustee has reported a video message posted in the portal to welcome you and recognize your imperative role in your library community. The ILEAD course has launched with the first six learning modules. Everything you need to know about the trustee role and expectations is included in Library Trustee 101. There is an ethics refresher with reminders for avoiding conflicts. There is so much more to attending a board meeting. And in the "How to Conduct an OMA Compliant Board Meeting," our trustee contributors and legal advisor walk you through it step by step. The Board Operations and Policymaking Modules will provide a more in-depth review of the trustee's role and responsibilities. The review of the Illinois trustee requirements will remind trustees how to prepare for the new year. This is just the beginning. In the coming months, new modules will be added to address those areas in finance, planning, and engagement that trustees should know. Each learning module provides an overview of the information included in a to-do list. While the modules do not follow a particular order, we strongly recommend that you begin your journey viewing the "About This Course" module and continue viewing the topic pages within each module. You may also view and repeat the modules in any sequence if you seek information on a particular topic. Learning exercises and non-graded quizzes will enhance your learning, like the Library Trustee 101 Scrabler listed for this module. For each module that you complete, you will earn a user badge. When a module includes a video, a link is provided to a PDF of the video scripts on the topic page. To ensure the best learning experience, the video scripts are available in 12 languages: Arabic, Chinese, English, French, Gujarati, Hindi, Japanese, Korean, Polish, Russian, Spanish, and Urdu. The video narration and closed captioning are currently available in Chinese, English, French, Japanese, Korean, Polish, Russian, and Spanish. Topic pages will also include links to additional resources for trustees. Additionally, both the course and the ILEAD Trustee website have a list of references and resources to provide trustees with the knowledge and tools they need to succeed. One example of a learning tool for success is Anna's 10 Steps to Trustee Success. Be there. Be invested in the library and your work as a trustee. Come prepared. Read your board packet. Be ready to discuss agenda items, and be ready to work. Obey the laws. As a trustee, you are an official and must be prepared to follow all local, state, and federal laws. Leave conflict behind. Do not let personal discord interfere with the board's work. Focus on the task at hand. Be respectful at the time of other board members and make readings effective in moving library business forward. Stick to the facts. Avoid making accusations or derogatory remarks. Show respect for all. Show civility and courtesy to fellow board members, staff, and the public. Make respectful and inclusive decisions. The library belongs to everyone. Decisions and policies should reflect that. Avoid micromanagement. The board should focus on the big picture. The director handles the daily operations of the library. Display professionalism. Be your best self during board meetings and when representing the library. We have kept the navigation simple for those unfamiliar with an online course format. When you log in, the navigation menu lists Home, Announcements, and Modules. Notifications of updates to the course will be provided under Announcements. The Module's link is where you will see the individual learning topics. We refer to "About This Course" as the "Housekeeping Module." In addition to the navigation and FAQs, you will find the "Learning Your Preferred Language" page. This page provides directions to reset the course to a different language and links to the translated videos and scripts previously discussed. This module will be updated as the Learning Portal evolves. The Welcome Module provides access to quarterly updates from the library world in Illinois. There is a link to the critical days and dates that are helpful for trustees to be aware of. If you are a new trustee, visit the Library Trustee 101 Module. This module will include information about the trustee's roles and responsibilities and what you can expect as a new trustee. Ethical Principles is a great refresher for everyone. We have included information and guiding principles from several resources. This robust module is essential for every trustee. Most are not familiar with the details of the Open Meeting Act. No matter your library type, the OMA applies to you and your committees. The Board Operations Module highlights those topic areas related to the management responsibilities of the trustee role. Policymaking covers bylaws, policies, and procedures, and library governance. You will want to visit the Illinois Trustee Requirements page to learn more about trustee training and annual requirements. We are so pleased to have received continued funding for this vital learning resource. We work daily to add new information, update the resources and references, and work with our expert trustees to ensure the portal remains relevant. Before we take you through the ILEAD Trustee website, we have an essential message for our ILEAD team members. The ILEAD team would like to recognize our contributing authors Katherine Lynn Cottle, Philip Lenzini, Becky Spratford, Thomas Stagg, and Christine Westerlund. We appreciate these individuals' time and effort in developing content for the ILEAD Learning Portal. The ILEAD team would also like to recognize our advisory committee members. These individuals meet quarterly to review the progress of the project, the content being presented, and plans for future development. We appreciate each member's willingness to be a part of ILEAD. Let's begin your ILEAD journey today. Our website, www.ileadtrustee.org, is the home of ILEAD and is available to everyone interested in learning about the resources available. We encourage you to share this website with directors, library staff, current trustees, and those you are recruiting for a trustee position. Like the portal, we will update and expand the website to ensure the most recent information is available. To learn how to access the ILEAD Portal, click "Register" on the blue navigation bar. We hope you create your account today. Thank you again for joining our session today. Thank you for inviting us. We are happy to answer any of your questions.
The video with our avatar facilitating that demo for you. We use several different avatars with voiceovers throughout the portal. We did this as a way to save time and, of course, expense. But it also allows us to easily update the content and to produce those videos and make any necessary changes as laws change or other updates happen. You'll notice in the chat that I have given you the link directly to the course. When you click on that link, it's going to redirect you back to L2. You'll enter your L2 login name and password, and then the system will automatically authenticate you and return you back to the course so that you can begin. You can also see those directions on the ILEAD Trustee website under the Register tab, as mentioned. But we appreciate you letting us come today. We're happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, feel free to join us at a workshop, or if you hopefully will go in and access the portal if you have any questions or difficulty getting in, or need to check the portal along the way, just email us at the email address that is also splattered all over the portal as well. Again, I just wanted to say thank you for inviting us, and thank you for the work that you do as trustees. It's important work, and we greatly appreciate it. And I hope this makes your life a little easier and helps you do your job, too. Thank you.
Appreciate you letting us. Thank you very much.
I mean, it's like a very informative piece of field obviously, and it's like subscription.
It's hard to watch them now.
I know. I was having a hard time, especially with the second one, because her teeth looked really weird. So I was like, "What's the worst of the teeth?"
It was the neck. We were laughing about the neck when she yelled "neck."
Yes, that was her.
Yeah, all right. I mean, I'm going to, and it's obviously, I can put her account over there. I'm going to, maybe this evening, try and recruit others for to be a trustee or say. I guess I can send it to her now. I mean, I had conversations in the past, trying to do the Jackson conversation, trying to really break it down, and even I articulate it quite well, and everything fully grabs that concept, so.
AI is terrible. At least three of you are veterans, you know, you might want to look in there. But, you know, I think it's a good tool for the new people.
I just want to mention your five, so.
Yeah, I like, and I wanted to. I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm glad for having, no, I was, I got the website, I pulled it up, so I'll probably go back and register. Latanya was on the, she was one of the early users, she was typically the main tests.
Well, I can see, I mean, how they make you do that course, open meetings, something like this, so.
Beautiful, beautiful. Well, ladies, I know we've been doing it a very long time. We're gonna start off around here, if that works off with everyone else, so.
I've asked Matt for next week, you know, he may have a lot of stuff here, Matt has it at 5:00 in the morning, so, next month.
Absolutely. So.
I don't, usually, I'm really the first to break that.
Yes, we just, the lights always change, and so I don't make a point, so I don't keep up. So.
All right, I'll just update you on some projects. We're doing what I'm calling material laundering, our laundering job. So we're running all the materials through our auto. I know. In fact, Patty, when she sent me the app today, she called it the laundry class. Anyway, so what that does is, it lets us find errors, find things that are in the shelf, find things that are damaged. It just lets us kind of glean things out of the collection, and it also helps us to shell-free. So shell-free is when you make sure everything is in order. So when you run it through, it has to go back in order. So we're finding some damages, we're finding some oddities. Not a lot, but a few, and so that's worthwhile. And I would say we're about halfway. I was hoping to get done this year, and I think even the summer slowdown, we should. We'll have touched the whole collection, and gotten all our problems resolved. The biggest area of problems is actually CD, because we have some old bases and some. We've had a lot of different people put labels on over the years, so we're finding things that we don't want correct. So that's never-ending. The other thing we're, I'm happy to say we're done with, is I've got all my clerks. They've all completed the barcoding one class. That class lets them have certain permissions in Polaris, which is very modular. And so it's also the basis for becoming a path founder. And the reason that's good is it gives them, one, a greater understanding of how Polaris works. They can troubleshoot better, but also if they were to move up in the library, that's the first step. So my goal was to have that done early this year, and we got that done. I think I mentioned Stack Maps to you last time, that's a mapping tool. We've been waiting to get some analytics, and I think we're finally going to get them. Been waiting for ITLs to deliver those. The main floor is pretty much done. We haven't done the upstairs yet. But what it does is, if you go and you click on item, you'll see a little button that says "Map It", and then it'll bring up a representation of the floor. So we had to recreate all the new shelving arrangements.
2D or 3D?
Pardon me?
2D or 3D?
Yeah. Maybe in the next iteration. You'll forgive them? All right, and then just real quick, I just wanted to mention, in spite of the creepy avatar thing you just saw, I went to a three-hour AI in the library forum, put on my library 2.0. And it is rare to go to a conference and be excited and not want to leave. I mean, this thing was back-to-back, three hours, no breaks. And it was amazing, because they were talking about, you know, competencies in libraries, ethics, was the stuff to have. The programs you could do, how to fix your policies, how bias comes into it. And I was just totally nerd out by it. Because I do use some AI. I think you guys know maybe that I've enrolled in some policies. Claude? It's Claude AI. No, it's the Claude AI. So, yeah, I've gotten it up pretty well. So like, you can run a policy through there and say. Pardon me?
Your new boyfriend?
Yeah. Claude AI, not Claudia. So you can run a policy through there and say, like, "Find your map layers. Where is it inconsistent? Am I using inclusive language?" So, I mean, you're really unlimited by your imagination. And then you check it, and then you check it.
We've talked about some very specific ways to get started in policy.
And then we want to do.
We run some policies through, we'll tell you guys what the results are, and see if we can bring anything useful for you.
And then we want to run job descriptions.
Yes.
Oh, do you have any questions?
I just, why don't we talk about it at PBR, I mean, the ILEAD 69, I think you guys have it here before.
Yeah, actually, we just had a meeting a couple days ago. I had presented some goals. I don't have all my stuff in front of me. But what we decided to do was, again, I kind of ran it through Claude, how to kind of create SMARTHoles. So I took the goals and recommendations and just kind of said, "How can we rephrase this as a SMARTHole?", which, you guys know a SMARTHole, though?
So Nikki gave out that handout.
Yeah, yeah. It's completely stuck in the network, so. So we had a really robust meeting, I think. And we're going to start, you know, we're going to put some dates and some time on it. And then when we get our leader project management demo, we're going to start looking at how we might start plugging that in. It just helps you visualize, how are we on this aspect? How are we doing on that aspect? It's visual. So I'm kind of excited about that.
Ryan, it's the next connect.
The third Wednesday of May, no, yeah, May, what is that, 17th? The third Wednesday of May, no, yeah, May, what is that, seventeen point? And I did go ahead and send out a link to be, but I can send it to anybody that wants to come. It's like it's the fifteenth.
I think I need to review stamp on my Google Calendar, that's why I have to ask. I still have a set in every two week situation back when I was in two weeks and then I think I'm just out.
Yeah.
I said, and we talked about that, I guess there's. Appreciate anything else?
Do you have a spare? Go. The money needs to know what I have to say, it's okay. Just a video, it's fine. Alright, so update on the interactive project that we've been working on. Um, I have been a, uh, putting most of, most of the maps themselves are now available, will be available on Omega very, very soon. Most of them are out there, they're just not public yet, because there's a few tweaks I still have to make. But they will be out and available and you can go and look at them. And, uh, there's a few that we still need to work on that are our problem children. Um, once those get stitched properly and put together, they will also, if I don't make them, then it will be done.
I like the uploads on Instagram with the whole pictures that you guys are doing.
Mm-hmm. That's, um, Sherry Cowherd's been doing all of our, uh, uh, Facebook and Instagram posting for the last couple months now.
I really only pay attention to the children's department and the Instagram posts. The other ones I read, but I don't know. Oh, these are good.
Yeah, she's been deep diving through the digital archives and finding stuff to put out there.
There's some fun stuff that you guys have put up.
Yeah.
She's been a guy who accesses, joining library collections, down the ship.
Yeah, she really enjoys working in local history.
I'm not, but I, I'm not following Instagram, but I think I follow the different page then. I swear I followed her for a long time on Instagram. I actually tagged her.
Do you have your own Instagram?
No, I don't know.
No.
So I think I just tagged her on local history.
Like you personally, but local history does not have, oh, no, everything is.
I think honestly, local history doesn't even sound aged because there's only so much that you guys post. If you're circulating what you're posting, that people are gonna, or if you post the same thing all the time, people are gonna be like, huh?
Exactly.
We've got some legacy issues and, right, doing their own stuff, so just checking, just checking.
Yeah, we post twice a week now, Wednesdays and Fridays.
I have not paid attention enough to know that it's Wednesdays and Fridays, but I do.
It just started, that just started. It was just Wednesdays, now it's Wednesdays and Fridays.
I love all the pictures, so for me, it's, I find it fun.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing videos.
Wednesdays are gonna be. I know, right? Wednesdays are more of the photos and stuff like that. Fridays are gonna be more like announcements, if we have to make announcements, like here's the next batch of displays we've got up or here's a program that's coming up or whatever, so.
Announcements are good, I just feel like those.
Okay.
But announcements are good.
Yeah, I'm an Instagram person, so seeing on Instagram, I mean, I.
Yeah, uh, the library's Instagram page is, is doing really well from what I can see. Okay? I don't know. It just comes up last time I looked at it, I think we have like three hundred followers or something, so that's.
A thousand.
Oh, a thousand, I like all the stuff.
That's what my daughter said, Black Kurt's something really good.
And then we're on, then we'll say, library closed. He's like, ten hours away, that's.
Are you gonna like that? Sometimes we need a break, like the library needs to be closed.
Beautiful, 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 why, you know what I'm saying?
That's it, that's all I got for you.
I still have not made it down there to see my yearbook and or see if you have my yearbook in the first place.
What year?
Twenty sixteen.
Which school?
My card.
I don't believe I've got your yearbook. I think I have Eisenhower's twenty sixteen, but I don't have my card for twenty sixteen.
I think you said, I think, I think you missed that, because you said you have like two or three years prior to that, which I was.
Mm-hmm.
Four years.
Yeah, I think we settled like twenty thirteen, but I don't know.
I freshman year was when I did work, shouldn't we have the first place? Like we didn't, well.
Yeah.
Freshman card, oh, wait, freshman card. Anyway, anyway.
It's only like six years ago. Just kidding, I'm kidding. You just look very young.
Freshman card, I actually was twelve years younger.
Wow. But they graduated twenty years ago, I don't wanna carry it.
Listen, we didn't choose. Who did you choose?
Yeah, it's one of my, my extended task where incorporates my grandfather graduating from, uh, high school in nineteen seventy seven.
Your hands, everybody.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, so like I guess whenever someone's trying to hack my excellent pocket. You actually give you access to it, just without getting money for any reason at all.
Yeah, pretty much.
And it's what's up. But I, I really should, waiting so long as well.
Why not hang out for a little bit?
Oh.
You would love to visit, if you would.
Alright, well, we're down then now into.
Wait, 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 wait.
Oh, wait, wait, I was gonna get there.
I'm kidding, it's fine.
But please listen.
Knowing that it was gonna be a long meeting, I thought I would just do something short and sweet. Um, I know Sarah Eppson was able to attend the chief of work meeting on Saturday. I'm trying to make it possible for her, for her to attend all of them, especially since Interap, the library makes it easy. I really appreciate that she reports back to me. I got a two-page report on, and it's discussed, very helpful.
Who's behind you with Sarah?
She is a part-time library assistant. She is spending most of her time in the children's department and section, although she can work downstairs.
But she also teaches the English class, is that what it was?
No, she, she's on Discord, she's a moderator on Discord.
Okay, well then must have a different lady, I bet another young lady here on Saturday that works, well, you're teaching.
Yeah, yes, yes.
So she doesn't work for us, but she works in this building.
Yes. So not only is Sarah doing that, but it kind of amazes me how much she gets done. Um, she's been working on translating a lot of our materials and outliers into Spanish. And for the month of March, she finished making, oh no, she's currently making the Spanish translations of Jess's Community Resources Board. So when you go to the resource board, you'll be able to see it in two languages. She has finished making the Spanish translation of the children's reading decimal system. And I met with her this week and I asked her, you know, what are two things that you're currently working on that you'd be interested in telling me about? And she's always translating something. She's always looking for the next thing, she's always taking what she's already completed and sharing it with, um, other fluent Spanish speakers to see if there's anything she can improve upon. So she's always working on something and prepared to work on something. And so, I mean, I just think that's amazing. And for the first time ever, we will have Spanish reading logs for the children's summer reading program. And we're ordering, we're starting with one hundred of them, and we'll just order more. And I need to get her started with them, the adult teens as well.
That's awesome, so also we can, I always put that in this one.
Okay.
That's a lot.
It is. We'll work, we, it's always great to see our best.
England's next ridiculous.
Oh my goodness. Next week, we're going to Parsons on Monday. We have a, St. Patrick's is coming here, preschool is coming here on Tuesday. On Wednesday, homeschool families are coming and on Thursday, preschool families are coming. And if it rains on Tuesday, so St. Pat's can't come here, we are bringing them here on Friday. So it's gonna be ridiculous all week long at the library.
That's what I'm saying, and do yourself an offer on Fridays, Fridays are key.
That means I'm gonna be seeing some pictures on Instagram.
Yes, you will.
I love it.
And the number to know is ten AM. Ten AM.
Something that takes photos of sort of things like this.
We always have somebody taking photos, um, whether it's John or Amanda or I know our part-timers will be here for some of the shows, will probably be giving a camera to take photos. Um, and Susan and I are currently, as of today, working on our summer show. We already have all the dates planned, we don't actually have the show, so it's not great.
And the lab, or should it?
Yep.
Well, I appreciate that.
Well, I have to say, my kids still talk about Carol.
Good.
So it was a highlight of coming here. And I ended up coming to buy all the books you didn't have, that was serious.
Well, we started to worry about next week. Well, I appreciate that, well, why?
In the interest of time, I refer you to my written report. Uh, if you have any questions, I can answer them. We've still done a lot of work, I'm, I'm happy that you guys, you guys are up for it.
You have any questions, Karen, or something?
We will do that if that if 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 I is moving now now into the course. P P R policy relations.
So we spent last Thursday, and so we really spent our time mainly on, I would say, just reviewing different policies. But first, kind of just going off of what Carol had talked about was the D E I committee. So she had prepared that business report for us and had really just touched on improving the inclusivity in the language that the library uses and making sure that's pretty uniform. And then we also talked about, like, inviting different community members from different, you know, cultural groups to also be a part of this D E I committee meetings, just so they can kind of bring in that additional support and and topics for that as well. And so I was gonna reach out to some of my CHCO members to see if any of them would be available to attend any of those meetings and so if they're still gonna get back to pieces. It's like in the middle of the day, so it's a little difficult sometimes.
I I I think that, what I think would be more effective is is, I think those are two separate things, to be honest with you. I think getting community input should be a separate, I mean, the D the current D E I committee has been tackling internal issues. And I think that possibly we should have a second committee made up of staff, maybe trustee or two, and community members to see what we needed to for our place. That's that's my suggestion. And I I think Carol's on board with that too, so we'll talk about that a little further, as long as the board is okay with that. But I think that, I think those are two slightly different things, so.
And so next, the action item for the art artifact acquisition of this sort of policy.
I would be free to, uh, I forgot to add a phrase. It was the same policy that we had in twenty twenty one. I'm supposed, I was supposed to add that this uh, this this policy will be reviewed by the board at least once every three years. Uh, that was supposed to be at the end, yeah.
What happened?
Oh, from the, and then we did, that we, yeah, that was, that was the recommendation.
Could this make it more formal?
So we are the A three isn't it, just not made in front of us, so. Motion to.
I motion to pass the amendment second.
All right, this question, second, any discussion? Sitting on all papers, signify, I say aye. Aye. D E I, sorry, the chair, I have a motion to carry.
I hope I captured.
I was reading over and I was like, yeah, I think you got.
I hope I captured what you guys wanted to achieve and if you, if it's already discussed, a little bit talked over with with the administrative staff who did look into the of the meetings and they had a couple of. Oh, concerns perhaps of what we're with what we're proposing, uh, if I can share those. So, uh, they thought that if we're gonna put a time in an hour limit, that that thirty might not be enough. Because thirty hours per per calendar year, because that's two and a half hours once a month. In some organizations, their meetings are longer than that, so, uh, they thought, you know, maybe three for thirty six hours or four, uh, but in twelve, uh, four, making it forty eight hours. The other suggestion they had possibly, either one of those, the other suggestion they had possibly was, um, they they asked, should we consider just for the nonprofits, just a flat ten dollar fee for it? I'm not sure how I feel about that one, but I told him I'd pass that along too. They liked the, uh, the two, you know, two no shows a year are allowed, and the second one you you'd be like that. And they did express concern about the, which these two things kind of tie together, the quiet study room, I mean, compared to meeting room, uh, just noise considerations. So we'd have to, maybe think that, because it's right out there on the floor, uh, so like, well, we could, well, there's no sound system in there, so if we said, if you need a sound system, this isn't the room for you. I mean, we might be okay, but it's for quiet meetings. Yeah, four of us, well, four of us, so anyway, that I just wanted to pass that along and and you guys make up of what you will. There are a few, like, we, I, we thought of a few organizations are out to bat that would would definitely, oh, and also, they they asked that we would instate that on January one rather than immediately, because there's already organizations that have the whole year booked out, so, you know, we didn't want to penalize current, uh, you know, say, now you gotta pay because you've exceeded the thirty hours.
Well, why not, why not do it on a, on a month that was supposed to a calendar year?
Well, because it was booked, people book out like the whole year, so they don't send just like one date for the month, they have to send it out like. And then so they get booked fast.
Another point to reach that, I, we probably wanted it to still be a quiet, you know, study room for when it's not being booked, you might have to, or I guess, two or three times the price, or just now we have seen, at least one ingredient, we're using it for quiet, you know, study room purposes, so, uh, it's always why we'd be reading there first, basically, so that we have resources versus, it plays space for, uh, reserves.
So our finance committee members know the reason that we're they were doing this is because we've gone from about five hundred meeting room leases annually to over thirteen hundred. So, once we went free, uh, for for nonprofits and and community, yeah, uh, so we're we're running into, uh, we're running into conflicts.
Now, people use this meeting room as well as their meeting rooms?
Yes.
And then what about the room next door that wasn't booked or?
Uh, we have, uh, and we, and we do, we do like a library program in there now, and we have, and that could certainly be, but that is, that is set to be our gaming room in the fall.
And then what about the room that, does Friends still have that sorting room?
No, we, that's our storage, that's that's the library storage room right now. Wouldn't be a space very conducive to a gaming room.
No, not not the way it is, but.
And I, and I, you know, and, you know, one of the things that we discussed at last week's, um, committee meeting was, you know, a goal, a long term goal is some, to to build some quiet, some more private, one or two person quiet study rooms, yeah, that's right.
Maybe you can totally do it right here.
Yes, that's, and that's, it's actually part of our long term space plan.
Yeah, that would be so helpful.
And we're allowed to kind of alter, customize the space as we want.
We have to have permission from the city, uh, and that permission shall not be unreasonable without.
Right, yeah.
Can I say something to what you said about the quiet study room being, like, you could use it for either, either? Because we have an alternate date for it to be a meeting room, which would be set up differently as we would want it to be a quiet study room.
More like the study room, uh, so the setup would be, we're gonna get an alternate alternative, so you guys can make that decision when the the bids are open on May third. Bids are open on May third, you guys may vote to accept that.
So this is an action item, but it's something we need to table until you change the wording, right?
No, we need to change the wording. This is, this is the, this is what the committee.
You said you want to change it from thirty hours to something else.
Well, thirty was the, thirty was the amendment that I definitely put, made outside of committee, which I then motioned, I guess, fifty, I'd say forty eight.
Um, it needs to be divisible by four or eight, because that's how they book the rooms, is my understanding.
Same.
Divisible by, or, okay, all right.
You know, that is, that's, that's how we charge, because it doesn't matter, if you booked the room for two hours, so if we're charging people, if you booked the room for two hours, we're charging you for four.
Right, it's the minimum, exactly, it's not, that's not.
Okay. So it does not need to be this, correct?
All right. So you want to amend it to forty eight hours, is that right? I like forty eight.
Well, I mean, it, to his point, I mean, it would be the equivalent, so I think right now where it averages out, it's more like a two hour, two and a half hour meeting per month.
Thirty would be two and a half.
So if you do it for sixty, it would be two, two and a half hour meetings a month. I'm just trying to think about what would the breakdown be for forty eight, if you look at forty eight.
That was just four hours a month.
So two, two hours, okay, that's better.
Well, I make a motion to pass the amendment of forty eight hours.
First and second, any discussion?
No, sir.
Sitting on all papers, signify. I, I, I've amended, passed it, we don't have to vote on it, as, uh, maybe. And FYI, these are, these are the rates. So, right, now discussions, just to confirm, the two, the three suggestions were one, the potentiality of the ten dollar fee, the patent limitation being raised slightly, wasn't there?
Begin January first.
Begin January first.
Effective January. Yeah, so we would have twenty four, up to twenty five.
Okay, okay.
So, you know, going forward, right?
Yeah, and not penalize people who've already, who are booked more than that.
All right, why motion to amend the policy to include that's an effective date of January first, second? All right, first and second, any discussion?
Aye.
Sitting on all papers, signify.
Aye.
The chair, I have a motion carries now, we're gonna go on the motion as a new prize, um, is there? We, we had discussion, I, we're still in progress here. All right, so, all in favor, signify by saying aye here, protect the county, we're voting on the motion as a new prize.
Aye.
Aye, so, the chair, I have a motion carries. That was fun, like, freedom of law, we're both aware, situation is kind of great. It's rarely given, right?
And then the repurpose of the quiet study room.
Yeah, I think, particularly just moving to community direction, we need to do that, uh, now, this was, this was a topic that's been working. We still have time to to discuss the details of that, but you guys will have two bids on that, so you'll have two ways, next month, you'll have two ways to refurnish, yes, and we'll bring details to you after maybe. One as a, as a meeting room, and one as a quiet study room, so that might.
I totally would like to wait and table that, because I'd like to see the differences before I decide if we can.
Just, I mean, what's the point of having a bid and probably saying, suggest or this?
Well, at the time, we didn't know, so we'd bid it out two ways.
Yeah, so we might as well wait until the bid is over.
So put a case that you have put for thirty bits, refurnish the quiet study room, like we currently do as, but you put two bids at one for it being renovated as a, one sort of similar, for your same work, a study room, and secondly, a general quiet study room.
That's it, yes.
I understand.
Well, I motion to table it until we get a bid.
So, I, I want to do that discussion. Is there a way that it could be?
Well, I haven't seen that layout either, but I think that probably any room could be used as this, as a quiet study, if there's not a meeting in there. It's may, you know, it's not going to be, if it's set up as a meeting room, it's not gonna be as conducive to quiet study, but that doesn't mean it's can't be.
Like, in my mind, I'd vision a table like this that would be separated in a whole part, and then for when we.
That's why I thought we should, we should go and see the bid and see the furniture that's coming.
Oh, I noticed that, I mean, if anything, if I were to pass, doesn't have an effective date, probably not until August, which I assume would be hopefully by the time we got the furniture anyway.
Probably goes from September.
Well, that was gonna be made anyway, so, maybe it's my setting, like, it's what we do each place, here we, where we are, so. Uh, so, there's another discussion, sitting on, all in favor, signify, all in favor, table, please signify, I say aye.
Aye.